Excellent, that's not quite your second, but I appreciate that you did. We have four questions for Nancy. Are there any nominations? Are there any nominations? Are there any nominations? Closings are closed. All votes in favor. Uh, all right. Trey, Trey Turner, Diane Slavin, did you mean? Thank you. Well, thank you. And well, rise for the special community. Thank you.
Congratulations to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. And we're here today with this discussion so long, even letting you talk. Sorry, sorry, stop, thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Uh, Chad Ball here tonight, I'm here with some of our staff, Detective Chief Craig Wilshire, which will be a lot of conversation for our organization, I'll talk to our members who go to a value, especially as the day-to-day operation of this program, for the function for our citizens, Higera, Jamie White, the director, and Renee Glass, whom I believe before as our embedded social worker. Uh, we pre-titled this, "The Counting Approach to Mental Health Services in Our Community", and at the end of this, I think, probably go into a bigger conversation. So, it's kind of involved, because this speaker, we went all working with the board on this issue. Um, policing services, you know, all of us are here to solve problems and look for solution. Our police department is very diverse and it's just possible. You know, we embrace this idea, we're looking for different places to serve through our crisis intervention training, our police officers, and our vendor here. You know, when you look at this opportunity, or this commitment to service, our data is not meant, it's not meant to solve up this very complex issue in the state, and the reality of the United States is crisis and resource, the resources for people that are in crisis. And it's a complex issue, we're not saying we're solving it, we're just improving the service. So, like, to talk with you, as your police chief, how we want to move on here. There's a logical direction that are in place, that we can talk about night, but long-term we can figure out a better path toward, through a, working maybe through a subcommittee or a main, towards a local position, or a local, in just, so. You know, we're right on vacation, that's what we like to say, you know, tonight you're going to see some, uh, how we've embraced, uh, embraced our policing expectations, what's going on, that the crisis intervention training, that is, what we're doing with the programming, and like to talk a little bit about that programming, you know, Joe and Craig, how this actually has more within our organization, it's become a, almost a special unit. You know, we talked about embracing this, you know, it's important that all policing agencies, in my opinion, my whole opinion, be the training, whether these are citizens, or we embrace this task. This came upon as part of 30 years, and just recently, over the last few years, we've really taken the next step in training with our police officers. You know, we're going to show some anecdotal evidence, and they was occurring in the police department, and, uh, some success stories happen every day in our police department, and we're going to talk about those. You know, here's the, um, idea of what we call reductionism, this is, it's a theory that I've been thinking about recently, I just read it before. The next, trying to show data as displayed in the intervention training suggests these issues are overwhelming for our community, and...
And we're developing our services, and we're in the process of doing that right now, and we might be one of the leaders, and I think we are a leader in this area, in, uh, for the profession, so with your support, we'll probably be able to morph this to the next level. But it's hard to define what true success is. You know, our timeframe's been real short, the operation's only been in place essentially since September 1st, and our ability to acclimate's been great, uh, for the community need, but the question still lies, what is success? You know, it can be easily observed through some of the evidence that we provide tonight, some of the data, but it's, the data sample's so small, it's hard to really understand what we're actually doing, besides improving the service on day one, get the, get resources for our citizens on day two, three, and four, with our vendor, through other resources they have connections to. Um, we recognize we're a part of a, a bigger issue, that's what should be known, and we may be actually drumming up business for ourselves, we are being relied upon as a local community health provider with our vendor. And, you know, I, I use this quote, you know, it's, uh, from a social justice brief written by the National Association of Social Workers, it talks about the police are not social workers, yeah, but we are the de facto response to situations, you know, for drug use, homelessness, mental illness, domestic violence disputes, which are, you know, often become our responsibility. And we're the ones that are reacting to it, we're the ones that actually have taken notice for some of the citizens in their community, and I suggest that these encounters, when you say we're not social workers, I suggest these encounters, you know, they're, they're talking about a stage, it's not, you know, not can necessarily, because I think we provided a different level of service than most, you know, and our mission is to fill these gaps of society, and bring our end of constitutional policing and provide a higher level of service. Um, you know, our profession's been redefined, it's been redefined and given to us, it's what we do with it, with your support, to take the next steps. You know, when I talk about a special unit, the current path for these types of services, like I said, there's no other solutions being offered, some people have avenues for support, but the ones that call us, we are the source, so we have to do something that's responsible, we have to train our people to be successful. Um, we've embraced this role, we're taking generalist police officers and working with specialists like Higera, and to bring a genuine, genuine opportunity for our citizens to succeed, I just want to talk about all the things that we link together now. You're talking about taking a team of mental health professionals, substance abuse professionals, pre-trial services, courts, jails, community corrections, housing, health, and social services, essentially are being leded, led by the police in some scenarios. So, essentially, we, we've created a special unit, and we'll talk a little bit what that special unit looks like in the police department, and it's a group of police officers that have been specially trained, working with our embedded social worker. You know, we have special units for all sorts of things in the police department, and it'd be hard to say that there is anything more important than responding and helping people in this, having these extraordinary levels of crisis. And one of the questions that quite, that come up is, where do these individuals go after they meet us, after they meet Renee? Where do, where are these resources being deployed to? What do they actually need? And Jamie provided me some details here, and it looks like about 60% of these individuals need mental health services, about 20% need substance abuse services, 10% focus on domestic violence services, and there's another 10% that work, you know, that need some housing, food, and senior services, maybe some guardianship issues, Renee may be able to speak to some of these things that she's worked on very hard over the last few months. So, this provides a little bit of what's going on after they meet us. And to give you a little background of how this came to be, I'd like to turn it over to Craig. Craig, um, went to a, um, a conference probably four or five years ago, and about a year and a half ago, I was sitting next to our township clerk in a leadership meeting, and I soon learned there was an appetite to, uh, develop this program, or at least the onset of this program, and that's where I think we're at today. So, if you would, Greg, just talk a little bit about where we came from and where we're at today with our police department.
Good evening, thank you very much. Uh, so to try to understand, you know, for many, many years, we saw that there was a gap in mental health services and police work, so we, we continued to have discussions and have discussions and have discussions, but had no answers. Um, so that was truly the issue that we came, ran into, and we had no, nobody to turn to to give us any answers. And actually, just by happenstance, I went to a conference, during the conference, um, one of the actual, um, the seminars that was put on was a lot of police social worker. There, there was, there was, I chose between, there was two, two of them to choose through on, the other one didn't seem so interesting, so I went to the police social worker one. As I sat through it, I saw two young ladies up there presenting the police social worker program, one of them, one of them had started the program, the other one actually had become her intern, and now was a police social worker at another police agency. And it was amazing to see how much pride and how much joy they took in their jobs to be able to help the police move forward, giving people in mental health crisis services and getting them into areas that they need, and they, they talked about everything they dealt with, so child protective services, and, you know, mental health, the domestic violence, the things we spoke about, uh, they, they had a little bit different model. Um, but that, that was really when the light bulb went off, and I kind of came back to the organization and said, hey, this is, this is the, uh, presentation I went to, and this is a great idea to bring back, because this really fills that gap of, of things that our officers, um, aren't trained to do. Our officers are very well-trained, they do a fantastic job of doing follow-up and getting people into services the best they can, uh, but there was always this, this lagging gap, because we'd always have these repeat, uh, people that we'd continue to go out to over and over again, uh, for mental health services, uh, we weren't able to provide them. Uh, so fast forward a couple of years, uh, the conversation continued, however, before that conversation came to what we have today, um, I actually met Jamie White, and we had started to have a conversation about co-response. So now, having a, an organization where you can actually call them and they can co-response with officers, so Higera had a program out of COPE, the data could respond to a scene if an officer didn't have enough to get the person into services and help them. Uh, that, that kind of, that program, we, we kind of built on that program, and also another, another program that had in place was the crisis intervention training, um, which is something that our officers are trained upon, and now, I think, at this point in time, uh, we have many, many officers, and I'll have Joe, uh, Bailey talk about, Lieutenant Bailey, talk about that. So, we progressed from co-response to crisis intervention, um, and then, you know, seeing there were still some gaps within, within that response, um, and we actually had officers who were specially trained in crisis intervention, obviously seeing many, many successes as they went through their, uh, after they got the training, and actually went through many, many runs with, with different people in mental health crisis. Uh, Joe also saw a gap in, in that, uh, that still with what we were doing in order, you know, to progress to a, a more comprehensive, uh, mental health response. So, Lieutenant Bailey, you want to talk about the crisis intervention and the community health response, and, and that idea, and the concept?
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody, I'm your special services lieutenant for the Canton Police Department. Um, so, Deputy Chief, like you said, we had, uh, started Higera Co-Referrals, which is working very, very well for us, that was an external program that we had that helped the police department, what we wanted to do is to really start to develop internally within our organization, so we talk about departmental culture, how do we change things like that? We do that through training, um, and consistent training, and so, we had sent two officers to Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network as a crisis intervention team. Um, we picked that one because Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network is a large organization that's represented by our county, so, um, there was good foundation there for us, um, so, again, make sure we found good training, to send our officers to that's reliable. The two officers that went there, um, they did so well that when they completed, um, it's a total of 48 hours, it's an eight-hour prerequisite, then a week-long class, when they were done, um, the person that ran the program actually asked them to come back and be trainers, which for us was just huge, because it really showed that this was going to be a good fit for us. First two officers that go through know nothing about the program, and it just showed us truly how far our organization had come, and how strong we were, and what a good fit it was. So, they wanted becoming instructors for the program, and then taking that, using our own people to develop ourselves, we were then able to open more of a gateway to the program. Currently, we have 27 officers that are trained, um, we have another, I think, 10 that are slated to go, that number would be higher, um, but unfortunately, COVID set us back quite a bit, um, CIT had struggles, we actually, to help CIT and to try and push this program forward, we actually hosted them at the Village Theater, um, just to try and get a class together, because we, early on, we recognized the importance of this program, we had some very, very good success early on, again, one of the first officers that went that became a trainer, came back, um, and was able to, um, stabilize the situation, um, so much so that the, the other instructors over at the CIT class had heard about it, eventually she wound up becoming a CIT instructor of the year for them, based upon some of her success. So, again, we really knew we had, uh, we found something, and so we want to make sure that we're expanding upon it as much as we possibly can. Um, based upon that program, um, we had the co-response, um, Jamie would send out reports each month, Higera does a great job, but some people just simply won't call back, or they're not able to reach them, they go out a few different times, um, but they're in our community, we have our officers here, so as their, as your training coordinator for the police department, one of the things that I look at is how can I further develop our people? Um, we've invested in them, we've given them the training, now let's let them apply it, um, even outside of just police runs. So, what we put together was a program where CIT trained officers would go out, um, I would take the list that Jamie had given me, the people that we were not able to make contact with, we would identify them, and then we would go out and re-contact them. And the entire goal is, it's based upon what's called the Memphis Model, um, which is where CIT, uh, law enforcement married together, where we get most of our examples from, is really not in the traditional police, you know, presence, it really was trying to break down those stigmatism, break down those barriers, and knock on their door, and just ask if they need help, that's it. It, traditionally, people call us for help, this was a chance for our people to go out and ask them if they need help. Um, and so, we did that, and we had some success with it, um, even if we get one person, that's one person that was in need, that we weren't able to help before, so that's a success for us. That program continued to build until Renee came on board, um, and then Renee was able to come in and help us, and between the two of them together now, we're taking a program that we've trained our officers, we have a subject matter expert in Renee, and we're able to push the two of them together, and it's a mutual benefit, Renee learns a lot from us, but boy, do we learn a lot from her. Just about, again, that different approach, um, to having contact with somebody, empathy, if you will, is really what it comes down to. Um, one of the things that I see here in Canton that we have that other communities know as time, money, manpower, um, I started with another organization, and so my entire career here, I've looked at, how can we focus on those things? And the CIT program, the Community Health Response Team is really what it is, our officers are incredibly patient, well-trained and professional, and they have the time, and we have the manpower to be able to go out and go do this, which makes it a success.
So, Joe really took a program and really pushed it forward and tried to find some gaps and fill them, and, and now, again, with the original Higera referral, I did fail to really explain truly what that was, so that was, the officers would, would have a person in mental health crisis, they would evaluate the situation, would have no options, they couldn't, would take this person for care, uh, because they didn't have enough to, to, uh, bring them into a protective custody. Uh, that call would then be made to Higera, who would then send a clinician and a person who was, who's been in mental health services out within two hours, to now come out and try to help that person immediately get the services they need. Uh, with the social worker now, we've been able to take that program even further, with we have Renee in the building now, so it doesn't take as long as if we need, um, someone to come out and do that co-response with the officer, so they can try to figure out services that they can get into, you know, and work them through them in a, in a much more timely manner, so it's very, it's been very, very helpful when it comes to that. Good, good. So, when we first talk about, uh, the initial positive outcomes that this program has given to us, besides, um, really trying to, really truly filling a lot of gaps that, you know, we, we didn't know how to do many, many years ago, this has given us great resources. Uh, the community interaction, um, there's a couple, there's a couple different, again, when we talk about data, it's really tough to talk about data, because the program is so young, and we don't want to give data that really is skewed in the beginning of it. So, when we talk about community action, interactions, um, we actually, we have a, a staff that, that doesn't seem like it's good, but the people who in the past have been our frequent callers, still continue to be frequent callers, and call even more now, and, and again, we surmise the fact that Renee is giving them such great service, that they continue to call back and continue to help, build that relationship, which helps them through that service process, so that's not a bad thing to have that increase. Uh, we look at the stats another way, is that our use of force, uh, mental health, uh, you know, calls for service have actually decreased, so, again, helping that in, in two different ways and looking at it, two different, uh, two different lights, it kind of, it kind of shows a, a different picture. Our use of force incidences in mental health cases have, have started to trend down, so we, we're having that trend down, which is, which is key, because a lot of times in mental health cases, you may only have the option of, of using force, because you have no other option at that time, so, uh, this, this program and, and all these gaps, and all these resources we brought to the Canton Police Department have really helped us start to bring those trends down. Uh, and access to resources, uh, these, again, our officers are very well-trained, they do a great job of getting people to resources and source, and, and finding things to help them, however, they're, they, they didn't know everything, they didn't have all the re, they didn't have all access to everything, so Renee has really brought a lot of those resources to us, and giving us a lot of different options that we had no idea existed, so giving our officers a much, much better, uh, opportunity to help somebody out and get them into services that they need. And then ultimately, the partnership, this partnership between us and Higera has, has really created a lot of these, um, these opportunities for us, and filled a lot of gaps for us to help people in mental health crisis. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jamie White...
Thank you.
...to talk more about Higera Health.
Good evening, everybody, my name's Jamie White, I'm the Director of Crisis Services for Higera Health, um, and I'm going to man two laptops at once, I believe, all right. So, just to back up a little bit, um, Higera Health is a large, comprehensive behavioral healthcare provider, um, we have six locations and about 30 different programs, we provide services to children, adolescents, and adults, um, struggling with mental illness, substance use disorders, and developmental disabilities as well. Um, we are the contracted crisis services provider for Detroit Wayne Integrated Health Network, and also have a carve-out contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield and Blue Care Network, um, of Michigan, to provide crisis services to their members in Wayne County as well. So, we've been doing crisis services for about 40 years, um, and we feel like that history and infrastructure really supported, um, our partnership with Canton Police Department. Um, just to give you a little bit of background on COPE, because that is essentially our crisis services hub, so, um, COPE is located in Livonia, it is our crisis stabilization unit, it is a 24/7 walk-in crisis assessment center for adults experiencing crises. Um, our, uh, police officers here in Canton, uh, bring individuals to us at COPE quite frequently, I would say, probably four or five times a week, um, depending on what's going on, and it's really a diversion from the emergency department. Um, so, we found that we are able to have better outcomes, we are able to divert more people from an inpatient psychiatric stay, when they're brought to a crisis stabilization unit, as opposed to being taken to an emergency department. That building also houses our, um, call center and dispatch, and all of our mobile crisis teams, so those are the teams that when Deputy Chief Wilshire and Chief Baugh and Lieutenant Bailey spoke about our co-response partnership initially, before Renee came on board, all of those calls would go through the call center at COPE, and then those mobile crisis teams would go out and meet officers in the scene, on the scene, so just to give you a little bit of background. Um, and some of this we've talked about already, but just so you have some data, the initial crisis co-response pilot started in September of 2020, and ran through August of 21, during that time, we received 232 referrals from Canton police officers, either for mobile crisis co-response, or to provide follow-up the next day, and get those people linked into services. Um, and it really allowed an additional resource for officers to utilize, a warm handoff to mental health treatment, the goal was to really stop people from falling through the cracks, um, and to get them the help that they needed when they needed it. We were able to connect 38% of those people to treatment services and resources, and you'll see that with the addition of Renee, um, to the team and having her embedded here, the outcomes have been even better over the past, uh, several months. Um, Canton was really an early adopter of this pilot, um, program, so we started in January of 2019, um, and then after Deputy Chief Wilshire and I met at a training, um, we very quickly, um, replicated the project here in Canton. Um, these types of programs are now in 11 jurisdictions regionally, um, and collectively serve 500,000 residents. Um, Canton, um, and Livonia, Westland, and Northville and Plymouth have embedded behavioral health clinicians within their departments, um, we really feel like Canton is the model program, and because of this, and because of all the work that you all have done, and the police department has done in supporting CIT, Deputy Chief Wilshire, Renee and I, and one of the officers will be presenting at the Michigan CIT Conference next month as well, to talk about this program specifically. We talked a bit about this already, but that pilot project really gave us the data, got it, whoops, you go, really gave us the data necessary to support this, um, embedded, uh, social worker position, and you all know, um, that there were dedicated resources allocated to that. Um, obviously, programs like these are getting a lot of attention, um, in the region, there's been a lot of news articles, um, about them, and, um, it has been a, a positive thing so far for the communities. I'll let you do it, okay. Um, having Renee here and having an embedded, uh, social worker here really allows for a lot more flexibility in her role. So, previously, while we were able to do the co-response, we were just really shifting resources on our end, a team would come out if they were available, if they weren't tied up in a hospital ED, or if they weren't out on another call with another PD, and having Renee here has really increased that flexibility. So, she's not only been able to do co-response with officers, um, she has been part of the Community Health Response Detail Team to go out and follow up with individuals, she's provided services to people, um, in jail here, and she's also been able to do that post-crisis follow-up. In addition, she's able to provide services to children and adolescents, so COPE was only a program focused on adults, we did not have the capacity to take referrals for adolescents, and having her here has opened up that ability, and she does receive quite a few referrals for adolescents. Um, some of the intended outcomes, and again, we've spoken about this already, but there is a huge movement for programs like these across the nation, um, and there have been really in the past 10 years. And some of the intended outcomes, I think that we can expect to see long-term are reducing the numbers of arrests and use of force, reducing the number of an emergency department transports, increasing that connection to treatment, improving the responder and officer awareness of the issues and available resources, so that they are able to respond differently, knowing that there are these resources available in the community, um, and really having that improved client experience or relationship. And so, really just having Renee as a part of a team, and having that mental health professional as part of the team and going out with the officer, will inevitably change the community's experience of that contact, um, with law enforcement. We do expect eventually that there will be a reduced number for crisis-related calls for service, I think currently, we're still in the, um, seeing the uptick because the service is here and provided, and people are aware of it in the community. Our hope is that there's reduced instances of untreated mental health issues and substance use disorders, that people get the care that they need when they need it, and then ultimately that it's a more efficient use of officer time and resources, and that there will be a return to the police department, because they, their time will be spent doing police work instead of social work. Um, so, some of our data, um, from September of 2021, which is when Renee started, through the end of February, um, so, in six months, she received, um, almost exactly the, um, the amount of referrals that we received in our first year of co-response, so the referral rate has doubled in the past six months, um, and she was able to successfully engage over 55% of those, um, individuals. And if you'll remember, when we were doing co-response, we were at about a 38% engagement rate, so having her here, having her available to co-response and be, um, you know, really integrated into the department, has really just allowed for a better outcome for people in the community. Um, and just a little bit of data, what we were able to glean about the people that we are serving, um, 32% are individuals aged 15 to 24, so a very large percentage of adolescents, young adults, um, it's almost equally distributed for males and females, and a lot of the common issues are ones that you would expect, suicidal ideation or attempts, substance abuse, delusions or hallucinations, and a lot of domestic conflict. And those are the presenting issues that, um, that initiate the referral. Oftentimes, once we get in and we're talking to the family, and Renee has a few conversations, things are much more complex, obviously, and there's multiple needs with multiple family members. Um, I just want to go over a couple of success stories, and, and I won't read through all of these, um, but, uh, just so you can kind of see in, in detail the, the types of individuals that Renee's having contact with, and, um, the, the things that she's being called to do, so, um, this individual, an 18-year-old male, um, had, uh, repeat, 18 repeat calls, um, in spring and fall of 2021, um, since the referral to Renee, she's been involved with, um, helping the family initiate assisted outpatient treatment with Wayne County Probate Court, getting this person engaged in treatment, and there have been zero calls for service Um, this individual, um, also, uh, uh, the PD has not heard from him since Renee has initiated services, but this was an individual who was an... but this was an individual who was an adult male living with his adult parents, had a history of schizophrenia and alcohol abuse. This is somebody that Renee first met while he was in jail, identified the need for a more comprehensive evaluation, advocated for him in court and to be diverted from jail to a more appropriate facility to meet his needs, and was able to get him set up in a transitional housing program, and also assisted his parents with getting their needs met. So everybody is now safe at home. And then I also wanted to talk about this individual. It's a fifteen-year-old male, history of marijuana use, lived with his elderly grandparents. There were some undiagnosed educational needs and developmental disabilities. And so Renee, obviously, is very skilled and experienced and was able to identify those needs very quickly, advocated for this individual to get a reevaluation through the school district, an appropriate diagnosis of autism, and get him into the appropriate evidence-based treatment, and also assisted the grandparents to advocate for his individual education plan at the school, transfer his schools to better meet his needs, and now he's doing very well. So some of the accomplishments outside of those success stories, you know, working in partnership with the Police Department, there's been policies created, there has been, you know, a lot of positive review of this program. Renee was able to appear with the supervisor on Good Day Canton early on, which I think really helped get the word out to the community about the program. And then, again, doing that outreach in the community, assisting with the Wayne County Probate Court process as well. So talking with Chief Baugh, I think that there are a couple of options in considering kind of what this might look like in the future or program expansion. And so if we really look at it in kind of a three-phase process, the first phase was Renee coming onboard, having the embedded clinician here. And then, obviously, as you can see, the need has doubled what we had originally expected based on the referrals that she is getting. And so one of the options -- there we go. So one of the options for Phase Two is really adding additional professional staff. And Chief Baugh and I kind of talked through, and Renee and I kind of talked through, what that might look like. And so I've included two options here with pros and cons for each. The first option would essentially be to add another full-time social worker to work a different shift from the one that Renee is currently working. This would really allow an addition of services. It would duplicate coverage for co-response, which, you know, has a really great effect on policing services and how you're responding to the community. Social workers within their licensure could practice and complete all of the components of a full crisis assessment, and this person would be, you know, a master's-level clinician as well, able to do the crisis assessment, the therapeutic piece, and get the person involved in those services. The cons of this is that this would be essentially a caseload approach. Each person would have their own caseload of people that they are working with. There is a lot of time spent on kind of case management-type referrals to resources, that type of thing, that doesn't necessarily require the level of clinical involvement from a master's-level staff. And so the second option would really be to add a full-time peer to work concurrently with Renee. So up here is somebody with lived experience, either receiving their own mental health or substance use services and/or both. They are certified by the State of Michigan and go through a certification process. And Higera utilizes peers in all of our program. We think they add a fantastic level of engagement to the programs because they're able to talk with people in a way that people that haven't been there essentially can't. And so adding up here to the team, this would essentially be a treatment team approach. So if, you know, Renee gets called out on co-response, this person could be doing some follow-up concurrently. If they were to go out on a follow-up call the next day, the social worker and the peer could go out together. So it's a more intensive delivery of services on the front end, but it wouldn't necessarily duplicate coverage. So there still wouldn't be anybody here weekends and midnights, and there would still be a lot of follow-up if there was a crisis that happened during off-hours. Peers would not be able to do the crisis assessment within their license either, so all of those clinical services would continue to fall on the social worker. When we are talking through kind of Phase Three, we've also talked a lot about how to develop interns and having interns here at Canton Police Department working under Renee as their field supervisor. I think this is a great opportunity for Canton to really be a leader regionally and develop an education program to really kind of help build these models across the state. Higera has established relationships both with the University of Michigan School of Social Work, excuse me, and the Wayne State University Social Work Program. Both I have reached out to just kind of for preliminary interest, and they will both be interested in talking more about how this could work. U of M specifically currently offers coursework within their School of Social Work that's focused on working with law enforcement. And then Wayne State University has a separate Center for Behavioral Health and Justice that is more research-focused. However, they do coordinate with internships and are very involved, for example, with the Wayne County Probate Court and some of the work that's being done throughout Wayne County. So those are the two schools that we would initially look at. So in conclusion, I feel like this program would really offer an opportunity to really be pioneers in this field and expand these types of programs. It would offer an opportunity to provide a unique educational placement for interns and then really allow Canton Township to continue to provide this consistency of services for the people in the community. I'm sure you all know the world of healthcare is ever-changing. There are always uncertainties. There's been talk of privatization of community mental health services for years. And so, you know, providing this program to your residents really says a lot, I think, about, you know, the township's commitment to the needs of their community.
Wow. Thank you very much. Before we get into this, I don't want to put Renee on the spot, but I'm going to. Thank you. This is an emotional appeal, actually, but there was, I think, one of those slides was the individual, and we're not going to say names and stuff like that, but I think it's important for everyone to hear this story. I've seen Judge Mack --
He is. He's using it now in his training.
If you could explain that situation to this board about -- it's quite extraordinary. The judge has been a judge probably, I don't know, many, many years, and he had never seen this before, right?
Correct.
Okay, if you would, just explain how that worked and how your involvement and how he made you work essentially for him.
He did. He did. There's a new process called Assisted Outpatient Treatment that goes through probate court. Instead of criminal, it's civil. So back in the day, everything was criminal. So we had alternative treatment orders, so if folks didn't get their shot, didn't attend to their needs, then they would see the judge, and the judge would say, "You're going to jail," or some other -- so this shifts it away from, there's still the criminal mental health court that Lieutenant Bailey is very involved with, the mental health courts, and into a civil proceeding. And it allows others in the community, the mental health code was changed, the wording was changed. So a petitional person, somebody who can be petitioned for an evaluation by a psychiatrist, now we don't have to show imminent danger, we can show future -- Ah! -- future potential for danger. So the language was changed enough to give us advance, a way to nip some of this stuff in the bud before it becomes a big concern. This young man in particular, I came in, when I came in, I was presented with several folks that were familiar. And he had, he was very obsessed with the officers, obsessed to the point of some of his actions were dangerous and causing the officers to be put in danger because of his behavior. But, and Canton compassionate and empathetic and professionalism out of your officers for a couple of years. Sort of, this sort of kept on going, but it didn't rise to a level that would cause much concern about what was happening. I looked at the case and I said, "Mm-mm." So, worked with the family, worked with him, family and/or he was not able to commit to mental health treatment on a regular basis. Then we talked to the family about this AOT process because it was brand spanking new. The petitions had just come out from probate court when I started. And so we had to research that, figure out what it was. And Sergeant Jurus and myself filed this AOT with eight other officers, co-petitioners, down to probate court. And Judge Mack, who wrote the law and changed this mental health code, happened to be the judge hearing the case, and he heard us, and then he made me de facto mental health probation officer for the young man. And so that required a lot of follow-up on my part to make, like, daily texting. "Are you staying away? How you doing today? I heard you were up at the station." Every single time, every single time. And since that was all ironed out, and it took a while, a couple of months, to get that ironed out through the court, he is not. He's doing well. He's engaged with the community in a healthy way. He gets to pursue his dreams now in a healthy way. So everybody's very, very happy and satisfied. We have an entire family right now that's very satisfied. And so what Jamie was talking about, all of those folks that we've doubled in six months. So of those, I have talked to, how many? And either worked with very intensely or as much as I possibly could let them, they would allow me to. So when I come to someone, I don't look at health status or any other ism, whether it's even criminalism. So if they're in the jail, I don't, of course, the crime is there, but it's not my first priority. My first priority is to look underneath the crime, what's going on at home, what's going on with your health status, what's going on in your environment, how did you grow up, what do you want? What do you want for your life? And then they tell me. And all I have to do is then match services to what they want, want, and they're engaged. And they keep coming back to see me, and they show up in the lobby and they bring their family members. Yeah. So it's so fabulous, this honor to work in this community with these officers, the most professional folks I think I've honestly, very professional, compassionate, understanding, they listen.
Thanks, Renee.
They're wonderful.
The trajectory of that individual, she's kind of down a plane, and he was found with a gun in Detroit, and he's tried to lead officers to the area of the car where he's held a gun before. And since then, we, she's done a wonderful job with him. And, you know, it's hard to extrapolate where it could have went, but it wasn't headed in the right direction, so. But when you look at this, you know, we've embraced this, you hear the passion of this group. It's pervasive through the department. You're going to have thirty-seven officers that are crisis-trained. We hope to have our whole patrol division trained. Jules and the Deputy Chief pushed this to where our dispatchers are being trained in a two-day training too, because, remember, that's the lifeline for many individuals, including the officers, that first initial phone call. So that's in process right now. But some of the easy, logical steps are what we put here, you know, with the program expansion. And I put, Jamie provided what that looks like financially. But I think what we can do also, you know, before we even get to the questions component of this, is consider maybe, you know, a few members of the board, put together a committee of what this really looks like for the Township in the future. The easy step is just add another one, but we're filling the gaps. I don't know what you actually call it, but it's almost like local community health, you know, we're filling the gaps of the state and the United States. And I know there's a lot of hurdles with insurance too, and it's probably, I think, if I'm not mistaken, is that one of the bigger issues? I don't know if you could speak to that real quick. What is the major issue with private insurance?
Sure. So there are a variety of health plans. Part of the issue specifically with private commercial insurance plans is that they don't cover a lot of the creative, community-based, boots-on-the-ground services that community mental health does. You have a very diverse community. I would say probably over half of the people that Renee sees have private commercial insurance, and so her services or any services provided in the community are not billable for that insurance. So they're able to go see an outpatient provider, they can go see a therapist once a week, they can see a psychiatrist once a month, but everything else, like case management services, any type of social services, assistance with seeking benefits, food, housing, none of that is covered. And so there's this huge gap. And I think, you know, having access to those services, and not only having access, but having somebody able and willing to walk through you, walk with you through the process is huge. Our health system, our mental health system, is very difficult to navigate for people that have a lot of resources, that have a lot of education, that know who to call. And so, you know, individuals who might be struggling for whatever reasons, you know, having that person to help guide them is essential.
So with that, we're going to see if there's any questions, but I can tell you, when you were setting Craig's office four or five years ago, he came back, I said, "Well, we probably at least need two," you know, and we might be at that point right now. And I love the idea, when I first talked to Jamie, I don't know, was it a month and a half ago, I was thinking that we would do interns first as Phase Two, but if you understand how that works from the way I've been told, it actually creates more burden and takes away services for the embedded social worker because she has to supervise and track, and it sounds like it's quite an endeavor, so that's probably more projected down the road. So with that, I'd love to move into questions for anyone here, and I'd like to hear your feedback too. See, this is, you know, a township goal, but it's also, you know, probably even projected beyond a five-year plan. This is essentially how we've morphed as a police This is essentially how we've morphed as a police, police officers in the state of Michigan at the very least. So we're kind of happy. We got to do something that actually addresses some issues.
Thank you very much. A great presentation. Do we have questions or comments? Kate?
I have a couple of questions. So for the referrals, there were two hundred and twenty-seven from September through February. And then about fifty-five percent were successfully engaged in services. Could you explain a little bit about what that means to be successfully engaged in services? Does it have to be through Higera? Or what, and what kind of services?
Sure. So we define successfully engaged in services as if Renee herself provided them some type of social work service. That could be minimal. It could be getting them an appointment with a provider, whoever it is. It does not have to be Higera. We, coming into this project and this partnership, we really felt like our goal is to get people services. It doesn't matter if it's with us or somebody across the street. We just need to get people services. And so that could be Renee providing referrals for them, helping them make that appointment. More often than not though, it is three, four, five contacts where she is assisting them with getting whatever needs met they might have. So that could be, you know, linking them with First Step or linking them with Growth Works or some other community provider. It could be helping them with housing, helping them obtain food, helping them with their Medicaid application. It could really run the gamut. So that successful engagement is engaging in those services. If she reaches out to them and they say, thanks, but no thanks, that's not a successful engagement in our book. And then hopefully, if we get a referral for them again, then she'll contact them again. And then maybe they'll decide to have contact with her and take advantage of the services she can offer.
Okay, that was very helpful, thank you. And knowing that this has been only, you know, about six months, is there an intention to follow up with the people who have been engaged in services? To see if they're continuing? You know, because mental health issues generally tend to, you know, to reoccur. You know, I just want to make sure that we're continuing to provide the support and making sure that people don't, you know, they may have started, but maybe they're not continuing or something like that.
Absolutely. And I think if there were a greater capacity for that, right now Renee simply does not have the time. There have been months where she's gotten sixty referrals in one month. And so if we are able to kind of have the capacity, then that would absolutely be something I think that would be worthwhile. Having to check in, you know, a month down the road, just even a call to say, hey, how's it going? Is there anything that you need? But the real goal is really, you know, not for us to be long-term providers, but for us to really fill that gap, get them connected with those healthcare services. And then, you know, hopefully ensure that they're following through long-term.
Definitely. But I think we also want to make sure that this program's successful and that it continues to be helpful. And that once there's been a contact, that then, you know, people aren't just feeling like, okay, I got help once, but now I need help again.
Yep. I think too, just to speak on that a little bit more, I know Renee's gotten phone calls where, you know, she'll provide services to somebody, doesn't hear from them for a couple of months. And then randomly will get a phone call back saying, hey, this has come up, can you help me with this? You know, another part is just that piece of consenting to services. So we do have people consent to ongoing services. They sign an informed consent, a release of information. So all of that is in place. And so if we were to do kind of that follow-up work, I think we would just need to modify that a little bit so people are aware that we may be reaching out to them again down the road to check in.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
For the possibility of internship development and recognizing that this would be an additional burden on our social worker or our social workers if we have them. Just wondering if we happen to go that route, is there the possibility of working with both universities? Or would it have to be one or the other?
It could absolutely be both. So moving forward, if we were to expand the program and then also do interns, we would shift Renee's position a little bit. So she would be the lead social worker here at Canton PD. Renee has over thirty years of experience in the field. She is more than qualified. She's also done field supervision for both of the universities in the past. And so that would absolutely be a possibility. I think we would probably want to start with one and then add on kind of the next semester to see.
And then for the, sorry, I'm going to be a little anal about this. But for the future outlook slide where we have the costs associated with expanding the program. I'm just wondering for the lead clinician with addition of one clinician, why is that more than twice what one clinician is?
Yeah, glad you asked that. So really, all of that additional cost would be the change in Renee's position. So as her employer, she's going to be put into a supervisory role that she's not currently in. So that would increase her pay rate and benefits so that she is then in a position to provide clinical supervision and guidance to the additional staff that's on board and also to those interns. And then the indirect costs associated with that.
Understood. Renee would be getting to be the lead and understand that.
She would be the lead, absolutely. So she would be doing a lot of the training for staff that are down here. I'm not, I can almost guarantee, we probably would not find a second clinician that is as seasoned and experienced as Renee. And so really just trying to coordinate. And, you know, she has really worked for the past six months to put a lot of processes in place here. And so really kind of having that laid out.
Okay. That's helpful. And truthfully, that's one of the things that concerns me about the internship program also is that I feel that we want, we want people that have been, you know, trained and can really, you know, I just feel like we want the best for our residents. So not saying that interns wouldn't be good, but we want highly trained people.
And let me be clear too, the interns would not be doing anything independently. So they may be doing phone calls, they may be coming along to observe, they may be, you know, helping with that, you know, gathering resources for somebody. But if there is a crisis or a co-response needed, that's going to be a licensed clinician that goes out. And the secondary person would be the intern or the peer or both, kind of depending on where we're at. So yes, absolutely. I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. May I just add? There are three primary professions in Michigan that attend to behavioral health needs, social work, psychology, and licensed professional counselors. Each one has their own training, their own requirements. Because in social work, I'm going to say ours is probably the hardest and most robust. Because you cannot get a master's degree without a bachelor's degree in social work. You cannot get a bachelor's degree in social work without an internship in the community with a field supervisor. And you cannot do that without also doing forty to eighty hours of volunteer, like social work one oh one, two oh one. So there, it's very robust. So the social work, master's level interns we're talking about, for me, would already probably be licensed, already have training, already be able to work within their scope of practice based on their license. However, they need me in order to get the master's degree. So then they have to complete two more internships that are, all of these are unpaid, plus four thousand hours of supervised clinical service by a supervisor. So then they, so then masters-level clinicians then need to find a supervisor like me that they can afford.
And we're hoping that these programs would really draw kind of the cream of the crop in those programs, that we would be, obviously, we'd be interviewing and vetting. We'd go through the same process that we went through when we brought Renee on of, you know, they'd be interviewed by the PD as well and would go through that screening and vetting process. But, you know, regardless, they would not be doing independent assessments. They'd never be in the field by themselves.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
And I appreciate the background information. I will say that I've learned a lot tonight. I've also had several family members who have had mental health crises. My sister is mentally ill and has been since her early twenties. She's now in her fifties. And she lives in Massachusetts where my mom is. And she gets a lot of services through the community. And it's really important for her to have the support that she needs to be able to live independently. And she wouldn't be able to do it without, without community programs. So this is really important to me. And, you know, I really am glad that we're doing it. And I really, really appreciate the police department for having the open mind to start something like this. But also Renee for all the work that you're doing for us. Thank you, and for the community.
Thank you, thank you so much for this presentation. Like Kate, I learned a lot. And I am really glad that we, as a community, have committed to this program and to ensuring its success in the future. I just have a few questions. The first one is on case management. And I know you can't give an exact because it's dependent on the type of case it is. But as we're thinking through bringing on someone else and helping with that, approximately how long does a case take to process?
I would say it varies, but maybe you have an average?
So most of our, most, all of our success stories have taken me hours, hours. So meeting with the person, meeting with their family, you know, it's never a one-person deal. You know, we all have a mom and a dad. You know, we're all, we're... So I work with them all. I get everybody's input. If somebody's committed a crime and they're in our jail, I work with that person as hard and as diligently as I work with the victim and what they want. And it's really dependent on what they want. So if somebody is very content with their mental health condition, and there are very many, many people, they're content, they're fine. They don't want any help. And they're safe. There's nothing unsafe going on. So those folks, we don't even really see them. We don't, I don't get them. It's very, it can be hours and hours. So the fifteen-year-old young man that we have a slide on, failed in every other community resource offered here in Canton. Pushed his grandma and grandpa, tried to cut his throat, tried to, it just goes on and on and on. Multiple, multiple domesticals. He was arrested. He was in psychiatric unit. I got ahold of the grandparents, not him, because he's fifteen, I can't. And met with them, met him. Had to figure out how to develop rapport with him and them. And all of us, all at the same time, in a small apartment. And I'm still working with that family.
How many hours do you think you've worked with them to date?
That family?
Yeah.
I don't even know.
Eighty hours?
At least. I did weekly home visits that were at least two hours each time. That doesn't happen in insurance world. That kind of stuff doesn't even happen in community mental health. They will only spend up to an hour at the most, even a case manager that comes to your house. They're out of there.
I think it's always hard to measure prevention too. So, you know, while Renee spent eighty hours with this young man who's only fifteen, who was on a really dangerous path, we don't know, you know, five, ten years from now, what could have happened if this intervention wasn't in place. So I think that's the challenge sometimes, you know, are the what-ifs? And really being able to measure, what does prevention and early intervention look like?
It's uncommon for you to travel, correct?
Correct.
She's been down river, I know personally.
Hours down river.
So she'll travel, she'll do all sorts of things, find resources, I know. And sometimes we even have to say, hey, blow up.
They do.
And she's so invested. We're just fortunate that we were able to hire Renee.
Just to, if I could provide some context and conversation. So I started my career twenty-three years ago with the city of Detroit. Served underneath Governor Engler at the time. And so when I first started, we would run into people that had mental health issues. We would pick them up on the street, we would put them in the backseat of our car, close the door, take them to a facility. And the only way we really got to know them is by repetition. So over and over again, same person. And after a while, you get to know who they are. But we were busy and I never got to know actually who the person was and actually fix the issue, right? There's a difference between, you know, putting a new coat of paint on a car, right? And then actually fixing the car and making it run is a difference. And so you fast forward twenty-three years later, with the help of Renee, I'm at a point in my career where I've gone from closing the back door of a police car to opening the front doors of a police department and welcoming somebody in so Renee can get to know them on a more personal level and truly try to fix the problem as opposed to just shuttling them back and forth. But that takes time, it does. And from what I've seen, Renee's able to do that. So that's just where I come from, the growth of our profession and where we are and how fortunate I am to work for this community that's dedicated to doing something like this.
Thank you for that perspective. Going back to the story of the fifteen-year-old kid who was helped tremendously by an IEP. And thankfully, the school district was able to provide evaluation for that. And I know, oh, they were not? Okay, so my question is around paying for services like that because I, in my own experience, have paid three thousand dollars for neuropsych testing for a child who needed services because it was not covered by private insurance. And thankfully, I was in a position to pay for it. But how do we help people like that, connect them to the financial resources?
In this particular circumstance with that young man, he already had Medicaid.
Okay.
But his grandparents were so disconnected. And he'd been in the system. And their, his grandfather can't see, his grandmother's, they're both elderly, they're both... his grandfather can't see, his grandmother's, they're both elderly, they both have their own health problems. So they were really disconnected with what could they do or not. They didn't even have their guardianship papers because of the pandemic. That was the first thing I did. Immediately got them a copy of their guardianship papers. So because he has Medicaid, we were able to go through community mental health, and that took months to get his evaluation through community mental health, to get the appropriate ABA evaluation. Once we got that, we went back to his original school and tried to amend the IEP. And everyone was very cooperative, but the original school is short-staffed. So the original school was not really able to fulfill the IEP requests. And so the grandmother, after much discussion and thought, found a charter school that could accommodate him attending his ABA services half a day and go to high school. And he's getting ASBAs.
That's an awesome success story. You said that we are able to engage fifty-five percent of the people that we come across. How does that compare to other communities?
That's a really good question. You know, I think it's hard to compare because Canton is unique in that there are, there have been a lot of referrals. It's been very, very busy. The Livonia started their clinician one month before Renee started here. And then our other departments are very, very new, just about three months. And so it's comparable across the board. And, you know, month to month, it does vary some. I think part of the challenge and a lot of the work that has been done is really figuring out the communication between law enforcement and mental health, what those referrals look like, and then how to really utilize the services to the best of the ability. So we have found historically, you know, over our pilot projects for the last several years, that if we're able to engage people during the point of crisis, there's a much higher rate of engagement. A lot of times, if it's the next day, crisis is done, they don't need it. And so, you know, one of the, both of, I guess, for both of the options, one of the benefits of expanding this program is having more capacity, so Renee is available, or having a second social worker available to do more of that co-response, because I think that's where we can really affect change, see those engagement rates go up, and then really kind of, you know, change the law enforcement response and make officer time more efficient.
Thank you. And this leads into my final question on what you just said, Jamie. And I guess it's more for Chad and your team. As we think about the different options for bringing an additional clinician, and thinking through the, the pros of bringing on someone who can work a different shift, do you have data captured on when the co-response teams are more needed, on weekends, evenings, like what time of day, holidays, that type of thing, so you can think through that as you're making the decision?
I do not. I think, you know, the number two twenty-seven in that area is pretty random, I think, early on. But you might want to speak to it, Joe. I don't know if we have any, any recollection of the data. We don't have anything precise.
It's hard to put your finger on it right now. We don't. It's just very early on. We're trying to get in the right direction, but it's, it's just difficult at the time.
I think from my perspective, from what I've heard so far, it makes sense to have two clinicians on opposite shifts. But I am not the expert here, so I will leave it to the experts to make a recommendation. But thank you so much for this program.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Steven?
All right. Well, I'll chime in also. I'm so excited to hear what you guys presented tonight. I think it is what we all envisioned, and hoped, but envisioned that would happen. Chad, you talked about you and Michael having that conversation. And Michael represented each and every one of us at that moment, because it's something that when we decided to pursue these chairs, that was a big, important thing that we wanted to see happen here. And so I think it's fantastic that, in fact, I think many of us had hoped we could have gotten it done even sooner, since when we started here. So, but we're glad it's here now. I agree. I, I would be surprised if any one of us envisioned that if it was successful, that it would just stay at the size it is now. I think, as you said, it's important for us to be prompt or timely when we're addressing these things. And so we need to have the capacity to do that. So any ideas to do that are welcome. But as Summer said, we're not the experts. So for me, I'll follow your lead on what's the best way to implement it. And in terms of budgetary concerns, I mean, you know, we'll see what Wendy says. But, but hopefully, hopefully, it fits into the budget that we've laid out. The question, or at least one question that I had, is was Canton and maybe some of the other communities you put out there a social worker, social work desert before we started implementing this program? I mean, are there, are there, is there programs from the county or the state that were helping our citizens, our residents, before we implemented this program? And are we, if so, are we still interacting with them at all?
Yeah. Well, I, there's probably two different answers to that question, pre-COVID and post-COVID. And so I, I don't think that our region has any provider deserts, whether it's, you know, social worker therapists or whomever. I think the real challenge is really kind of accessing those services and knowing where to go. So, you know, we talked about the fifteen-year-old and the grandparents who had those challenges, not even knowing kind of how to get guardianship papers, how to get him signed up for an evaluation, who to call, who might be able to pay for it. Really kind of accessing those resources can be very challenging.
And there was no one to do that before this? No one that's...
No one that, you know, would be connected to the police department and kind of get those referrals. So, you know, Hagera as a whole, since we started partnering with police departments in January of 2019, we've received over a thousand referrals just from police officers, which is mind-blowing to me, because we've been doing crisis services and vetting community mental health for fifty years. But it's, it's really that handoff, and that didn't exist before. So there weren't options, you know, to really be able to link somebody directly to somebody who could help navigate the community mental health system.
Yeah, I mean, I've had friends who have since retired, but whose career were in social work. And I always imagined or thought that they worked for the county or worked for the state. And I, I don't know who they actually worked for, because they were taking cases and working cases. And I, but, yeah, I, I'm surprised. I mean, never having looked into it, that it, it's such a struggle to get service. And I, I just think it's, I think we're now playing, where the, the cases that you gave examples of, where, I feel like we're, our, our police officers always have, have been respected and are so professional. But this really adds to the heart that our community has for people who need. You mentioned empathy, and that's a great, great word. I mean, we're really looking at it from their side. What are they going through? And I really like that. So, thank you.
All right. Excellent comments from everybody so far. And, yeah, this is really awesome. This is exactly, I think, what we envisioned from, from the beginning, on all sides of this. And so it's really, it's just great to see it, see it kind of come to fruition. So thank you, Renee. Thank you for the work that you're, that you're doing and kind of bringing this to life for us. And I think this is an area that I, I would feel very comfortable investing in. Because, you know, people are struggling in general, but struggling in particular around this. I did have some questions. Chad, Chris gave us, Stockline, sorry, Director Stockline, Fire Chief, gave us the 2021 mental health statistics. Six percent of their calls are transports or, or mental health calls. And then I see, you know, you had forty-four in October, thirty-six in November, and then thirty-seven in December. My question would be, do, does fire, or some of, some of this kind of cross-contamination or pollination, I don't know how you would say that, but are some of these the same individuals, I would assume? Like, start with a police contact, and then you would have to get maybe fire or EMS involved? And then those could potentially become a social work or candidates?
Yes. Oftentimes, there's times where you need to get people medically cleared. And sometimes we do the transport to the hospital, but often, depending on the situation, EMS would be arriving also. Almost, and it's tailed off over the last few years, but over the last five years, seven years, maybe. But we used to go to every medical run. And that came to us because of infant murder. So we ended up just blatantly sending every police officer to every fire run. But now there's some reason and logic approach to this, you know, because it's essentially a way, it's not a good idea to use the taxpayer money, just since Lieutenant Bailey on a high temperature on Glengarry Boulevard, you know. But there's some circumstance where you need to have a police officer there. So there is cross, cross off. And what we haven't done is those numbers that he provided for his 2021, it's hard to, right now, where our MS system is, break them off with a lot, a lot of work by crime analysts to really break, break those apart, to understand if we were there or not there. So.
Megan was gonna look at all that stuff?
As you know, she's amazing.
Smart as a whip.
Yeah.
As the director said, we, we go to every mental health, fire is, fire is always a support service for us if they need medical attention. They usually, they usually tend less mental to us than we would.
So some of these people were referred for services? That's good. Yeah, because it's abundantly clear people are really struggling. And, yeah. One thing I, you know, we were talking with Judge Giroux last week about his sobriety court, and there's been some talk about trying to get some participation with the mental health court that has got a grant out of the city of Wayne. You know, we are, you know, everyone's trying to, you know, we're all kind of trying to wrap our hands around this situation that we've kind of found ourselves in. And, you know, the beauty of referring people to services and getting people treatment is it's cheaper. It's cheaper than arresting them and locking them up for a very long period of time so that they can be discharged. You can then arrest them again, lock them up. They can be discharged, you know. It's cheaper to actually help people in the long run. One thing that concerns me is I, I don't like how Michigan has designed its mental health. It's actually how I would design if I wanted to kill people, is how I would design a mental health system. And the counties themselves are called integrated health systems, but there's not much integration that goes on there. And there's not much coordination. And so the courts are doing what the courts are doing, and there's some territorial disputes there. The schools are doing what the schools are doing, there's some territorial disputes there. We're doing what we're doing. And, you know, it's, there's gaps, and there's gaps in there. And, you know, what's interesting is when you, when you pull down the, like, the, the mental health primary impressions, right? So how are people presenting, as you talked about? You know, what's interesting is that alcohol use is the number one, is the number one on Chris's numbers. So I'd be curious to see what your numbers are. The second one is anxiety reaction, emotionally upset. And I would wonder to what degree either withdrawal or substance abuse plays a role with that number. Then mental disorder, which is mental disorder, suicidal ideation, number, number four, suicide attempt, number five. Which is interesting, because when we talk about mental health, a lot of people just want to talk about suicide. And that's a component to this. But when you actually look at the numbers, it's a much smaller component than the people who are slowly killing themselves day in and day out. The long-distance suicide attempts tend to not get treated. Then alcohol dependence with withdrawal and substance abuse, then overdose alcohol, then hallucinogen-related disorders, so on and so forth. But it's abundantly clear is a substantial amount of mental health calls are people self-medicating on illegal or legal substances as well. And I, I do like the idea of, of kind of closing that gap, of getting the initial contact, directing the person to services. But when we talk about what we want to fund and what we want to do, to me, it's really important that we do have some semblance of closing that loop. Because Michigan has one of the most expensive systems for watching people slowly kill themselves. And it's hard for me to want to spend more money to slowly watch people kill themselves. And so, you know, and which, it's shocking, you know, I do some substance abuse volunteer work at Walter Ruther Mental Hospital. And if you didn't pay attention to the news, a month and a half ago, somebody, it's for people who are criminally insane, somebody stabbed one of the employees there with a piece of metal and put them in the hospital. And these are people with severe mental illness. And for the most part, trying to treat substance abuse with somebody with severe mental illness is almost pointless. But it's shocking how strong and resilient the human brain is. Because I ran into an individual who I met at Walter Ruther. Years later, I barely recognized this person. They had a job. They were living independently. And what was diagnosed as severe mental illness cleaned up and cleared up as their brain repaired itself. You know, the neurons began to rewire, because they were no longer drinking themselves into oblivion and using substantial amount of drugs. You know, so what is the goal? You know, what I see here is you could potentially have four hundred and fifty-six referrals, if we just count the fire numbers. And I guarantee you, there is more when you add in the police numbers on top of that. So if we're going to talk about crisis intervention and stabilization, heck yeah, we need another social worker. And I, I do like the idea, I like the lead clinician model, if we're going to be expanding, but I would defer to kind of a, a more kind of like fleshed-out recommendation. You know, one thing I've talked to Deputy, Deputy Chief Paw, it's been a while, is we've talked about potentially trying to do a mental health summit and bringing in some experts to talk about those gaps. Get the judges in the room, get the schools in the room, get yourselves, fire, to figure out kind of, how do we really decide, if we're going to invest in this, how do we really decide what kind of an impact we're going to make and what the best use of our dollars is, and how we want to go about doing that? And so I would like to see us entertain that idea. And what's great is Judge Plakis and Judge Giroux have both agreed to do it. So that's good. We've got, you know, and they're the hardest, you can't tell a judge to do anything. You know, they have complete and utter power in their own little courtrooms. But I think it's worth doing. I think it's like, of all the things we do, some of the only stuff that's worth doing. And I'm married. And I'm married to a social worker. I've received services because of how the human brain works and choices I've made. And so this stuff is like really important to me. It's kind of like, as somebody who has been in lockup on the other side of this building, as somebody who has been referred to Higera for services, as somebody who has helped other people kind of walk through that path, and now I've got a little bit of position and a little, you know, I've got some budgetary power. You know, to feel powerless in a system that you don't necessarily understand how it's benefiting you or taxpayers in general, to feel extremely powerless and watch as other people fall off around you and die, to then be put in a position where you have some semblance of power. Most of it is election-related, but some of it is budgetary-related. It's a great opportunity. And I don't want to squander that opportunity. So if we are going to do something, I want to do something relatively big and impactful in that regard. But I do think expanding this, this program is definitely a no-brainer. It's definitely a no-brainer. And just like minimizing police contact with like the repeat offenders. And it was abundantly clear my first ride-along, you know, that, you know, eighty-five percent of the calls we went on, these people needed a social worker. They did not need an officer. Retail fraud on Michigan Avenue? Yeah, probably don't want to send a social worker to that. You know, it's not going to get, you know, maybe, maybe there's some component to that. You know, I'm pretty liberal, so like, I won't get too far along. But, you know, yeah, when, when danger is afoot, you want the uniformed person with the gun to kind of bring things under control. You know, but when somebody's just knee-deep in, in, in kind of substance use disorder or they are, you know, just, there's something else going on there, it's good to help kind of interrupt that pattern. So this is a really good study session. It was a great presentation. It gave us a, me a good insight into the work that you've been doing. And I'm very impressed and very grateful for the work that you're doing and grateful. And it helped that we, Sergeant Juris pulled me aside a couple of days when I was in records and he was just on fire for the program, you know? He's loving it, you know? He's a goofy, excitable guy anyway. If you don't know him, you should talk to him. Outside of that, if there's, I don't know if you've worked with Patty Esseling as like a public, like a, like a, because like, I love the, obviously, there's going to be a reactive component to this work. But like, if there's a proactive component too, kind of catch things before the police has to get involved, that would be cool too. Anyway, I talked a lot, sorry.
Thank you, Michael. Well, thank you for all that you do. And we've learned so much. We really, really appreciate this study session. And again, I know we all are very excited about this program and we do want to see more. And we look forward to what you can, we'll take the lead with you because I, I agree. I think we all kind of agree, probably we need one, one more clinician, maybe, maybe more than that, but we're baby steps here, so we do appreciate it. So thank you so much. And is there any other comments you want to make?
Thank you for the opportunity. You know, you have a police department at once this opportunity. So this isn't something we're just taking on. We want this opportunity. And when we're setting, when I was setting with Michael back some time ago and with Craig, I knew the appetite was there. And we got it. He represented this group very well. And I said, let's strike while the iron's hot. And I don't think we stop here. I just need help. I don't know what that means. I don't know what that means next. And I think first, a group to work with me essentially, then a summit to decide how that summit looks, then we start banging on some doors, I think, and go from there.
Yeah.
Okay. And any other board comments?
All right, I turned my mic off. So I remember last summer talking to Clerk Segrist, who had a lot of concerns at that time. And to hear him tonight, I think you've got him convinced, so that, I think that's awesome. What a difference.
Thank you. I remember that conversation too. Thank you.
I've tried to forget it.
Could have been worse, but yeah.
No, it was good.
Any other board comments? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Doesn't look like it.
Look like.
Okay. So we, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Okay.
I'll vote.
Sure. You want me to? Okay, can I have a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Have a good evening.